Here.
McGregor.
Here.
Renner.
Here.
Schnitzer.
Here.
Thank you.
Pause for a moment. Okay. Hearing of visitors, I believe we have a speaker slip. Has gentleman joined yet?
I do not see, I do not see that number.
Do we know who six, uh, two oh four nine seven one nine is?
Um, I do not, but it's not the number.
I do, that's not him.
Yeah, the number I'm waiting on is a four oh two number.
Okay. At council's pleasure, if Mr. McClurg joins, I'll come back to give him the opportunity to speak. In lieu of that, additions or corrections to the agenda. There's some discussion, I understand from mayor and rechecking that we have on the agenda this evening for first reading. The contract for the public defender. It's under first reading as opposed to a waiver of second and an adoption. And what I think I will do is, is, is take this out of first reading. Put it under. I would say ask for motion, let's see. We'll take it out of the consent agenda and.
Did they want a waiver on this? It wasn't marked on the report.
Actually, that's what I was just gonna jump in Councilman Lyric if I could and correct myself because I think I indicated to you waiver. But I think the director Parker in the meeting said she didn't need to be waiver. But I do believe at the last meeting, council agreed to put it on consent agenda. So that was my question.
A different process.
Right, I understand that. That's, that's why I was bringing that up. So. I thought she had also asked for a waiver. I was incorrect in the waiver portion.
Okay. So then there is no correction to the agenda. And we'll, we'll take, we'll move past most item C for the moment. And if Mr. McClurg joins, we'll, we'll come back to that. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Leesberg.
Moved by Mr. Leesberg, second.
Schnitzer, second.
Seconded by Mr. Schnitzer. Roll call.
Leesberg?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We'll move to item E ordinances for introduction of first reading. There, uh.
Mr. President, I'll move to introduce the items under section E.
Okay, items are, there's motion not required, but the introduction, thank you. Correspondence and actions, Madam Clerk.
Uh, none here.
Uh, council. Would mention that we did have the one email from Mr. McClurg. And I think he was going to speak this evening. And if not this evening, possibly next, next meeting.
Mr. Mr. Lyric, may I?
Yeah.
When I was in City Hall, last time I saw some email from Columbia Gas addressed to President Leesberg, which I'm no longer president, but I thought I'd bring it up. They were just about some rate changes and those kind of things that Columbia Gas is proposing. So I don't know that there's any action needed by us, but they had reached out, reached out to me to let folks know that there are potential for rate, rate changes coming.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Moving to representatives, the Community Improvement Corporation, Mr. Leesberg.
Uh, nothing new today, uh, with CIC.
And Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Mrs. Angela.
Well, this is solar week and there are four webinars type things going on for the first four days of, of the week. We're back in the executive committee on Thursday. And of course, our commission meeting will be a week from this Thursday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Convention and visitors bureau, Mr. Leesberg.
Yeah, thank you. Show report tonight, there are tickets available for the Creekside Cocktail and Chocolate Walk. That'll be taking place from four to eight PM on Sunday, February fourteenth. Half of the tickets are already, that have been available or already sold, which is great. They're available on Visi Gahan's Facebook page. Participating, participating businesses and attractions include Berland Boar, Local Cantina, Nostalgia, the Gahan Sanctuary, Gahan Area Arts Council, Buckeye Candy, Fake Cakes, Nothing Bud Cakes, Cold Stone Creamery, and the Ohio Herb Center. So if you're looking for something to do on Valentine's Day, that's sneaking up on you guys. Guys, you've been warned. And also Herb Day for 2021, the date has tentatively been set for Saturday, May first, provided that we can all get together and celebrate Herb Day. That concludes it.
Thank you. And the Mid-Ohio, oops, skip that one. And the school board, Mr. Schnitzer.
Uh, nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. And official reports, Madam Mayor.
Sure, thank you. Just a few items for tonight. There should be a proclamation attached to tonight's agenda. Today's February first, which kicks off Black History Month. So there's a proclamation that declares the month of February, Black History Month here in Gehanna and recognizing an event that honors the extraordinary achievements and contributions of black Americans to the United States history. It was interesting in researching, researching Black History Month that as late as the mid-sixties, the most popular textbook for eighth graders mentioned only two black people in the United States history since the Civil War. Which is really what prompted Black History Month to be started in its full month-long capacity. So we will be doing some regular posts throughout the month on our Gehanna.gov website as well as our social, social media platforms, honoring residents and businesses in Gehanna in honor of Black History Month. So stay tuned there. Also, you might have received last week, Friday, we rolled out our, our new Gov. Delivery platform. This is the new communications platform we have been talking about for the past several months. It's been referenced in the mayor's report. It really is a new way to streamline communications to our residents. Every, every person who currently is a subscriber to any one of the city's numerous platforms, whether it's council agendas, Parks Newsletter, City Newsletter, et cetera, received a letter on, uh, an email, I should say e-newsletter on Friday, offering them to subscribe to this. Residents can select what type of information they get in real time, whether it's public and emergency safety alerts, information on parks, information on road closures or traffic alerts, information on camps, business news. They can specifically tailor the communications they get and how they get it, whether it's email, text, or otherwise. So there's information on Gehanna.gov where people can go to learn how to subscribe to that. We also have that on the website. But really exciting new way for us to expand our communications with residents and get information in their hands as quickly as possible. We also are continuing work on the sidewalk program, just wanted to give an update on that, as well as our ADA Transition Plan. Those are two separate distinct programs. Sidewalk Maintenance Plan, ADA Transition Plan. Our team has met with the Federal Highway Administration with regard to our ongoing action plan. They've given a thumbs up to that, are very pleased with the progress that we are making. Right now, we are working on the community input, public input portion for both the sidewalk plan and the ADA Transition Plan. I think we're going to align those at the same time and, and figure out how we work with the community from that with, how we work with the community to get them engaged in that. Federal Highway Administration has not really offered a whole lot of ideas on that, but we're, we're exploring what options we have. Probably a Zoom call, something to that extent, as well as identifying disability groups throughout the, the area that we can reach out to, to get them involved and solicit their input. So more will be coming on that certainly throughout the month of February. Also, just keep in mind, I know vaccinations are large on the mind of a lot of our residents. Vaccination information, including providers, changes almost daily. So we encourage residents to go to the Ohio Department of Health, the coronavirus.ohio.gov website to get that information. We do update our Gehanna.gov website every Thursday with information on that. So residents can also go there as well. But as soon as we get information that we can pass along to our residents, we will do so. Finally, City Hall again remains closed with, it is with regard to limited access by appointment only. We're going to continue that through February, just to give time for people to, I don't know what's gonna happen with the advisory. The current advisory right now expires, I think at the end of this week. We'll be waiting to hear what happens later this week on what the governor does with that or the Ohio Department of Health. But we will continue our operations through February because that just allows us for scheduling time out to plan for that. And lastly, if, if all of you are at home, that's wonderful. Stay warm and safe. I do understand our road warriors are out on the roads right now. The roads are not in great condition. So if there is anybody who is out and about and needs to drive home, please be safe. But again, our snow warriors were out all Saturday night and Sunday and are out again tonight. And given the forecast, I suspect they're gonna have a busy week ahead of them in the coming days. That is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Malarski.
Mr. Lyric.
Yes.
Mr. Lyric. I just saw that Tim McClurg is, sent an email.
Okay.
He's, I was not going to call in, but I am on the web. What and when should I call in? So. Thought I'd let you know that.
Okay, um, let me pause here for just a second. Um, Mr. Malarski, if you want to go ahead.
This has been a pretty exhausting meeting, so I've got nothing further to add.
All right, give me just a second.
Making up for last week.
Actually, if I could ask a question of maybe Mr. Malarski, something that was included in the mayor's report, if that would be permissible, Council President.
Yeah, what's the question?
There was a reference in the mayor's report to working on unsolicited mail, updates to noise ordinance, and updates to mobile food vendor code. I was just curious, is that including, I think the, the litter issue that we had discussed last year? Okay, thank you.
The unsolicited written materials is the litter issue.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but wanted to clear, clarity.
We're hoping to have that submitted soon.
Okay, fantastic.
Actually, since that's my report, if I could comment real quickly, Councilwoman Bowers, I, the intention is to send that to both you and Councilman Renner prior to presenting that to council is, because I represented to you that I would do that and give you some opportunity for input before we have a final version to send to council. So look for that hopefully within the next week.
Fantastic, thank you.
We'll do a two-minute pause here. Okay, we'll go ahead and do council comment, and I believe Mr. McClurg is calling in, so we'll give him a check, a chance to speak. Mrs. Angela?
I, my husband and I went to Wexner Medical, well, the Schottenstein, and we got our first vaccine for COVID-19. And so we are feeling pretty good about that. And 21 days after that, which would be another Saturday, we'll get the second one and hopefully be COVID vaccinated. So I would cert, it's, it's a wonderful process that they have at, at the shot. So for what it's worth, there were quite a few people there, but it was very well done. So I want to hope that everybody has, you know, is healthy and safe. And I have a, a plug, on LinkedIn, there's a person named Brian Ward, and he's, has these little wonderful things that he prints out for people to see and feel, make you feel potentially better if you were not feeling well or that sort of thing. But one is, this is the one I'd like to bring up tonight. Gentle is not weak. Forgiveness is not approval. Love is not control. Gratitude is not complacency. So if we can keep that in mind, that we can be good people to our neighbors and friends and, you know, help those ones that need help. And hopefully, if you need help, you can, you can call on one of us. So I hope everybody has a wonderful rest of the week. That's it.
Mayor, I'm just talking to you. Thank you, Karen. Mr. Renner?
I just want to say thank you, Mayor. If you could send my thanks to Grant for the road warriors. I did see them twice in our area yesterday, and I really enjoyed how they work in Tandem. There was two trucks, really efficient, moving in the snow and keeping the streets clear. So it was really nice. And I can attest that the Columbus roads are really a lot worse than Gehanna traveling in tonight. So it's always refreshing to come home. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Ms. Bowers?
Uh, yes, um, thank you to the mayor for the proclamations, both recognizing Black History Month and the Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week. I remember last year when we were in chambers and Ms. Klein and her family came in to talk to us about their experience. And I just think it's a really great tradition, carrying that on as a recognition for things that so many in our community experience. I was also very happy to see that in the mayor's report, there was an item regarding.
I think that's Mr. McClurg.
It is. Hold on, Mr. McClurg. We'll come back to here in just a minute. Go ahead, Marissa.
Sure, thank you. Um, the item about tech, technology development for council.
Hello?
Hold on just a minute, Mr. McClurg. We'll, we'll.
Okay, thank you.
Back to that section here in a minute.
Anyway, I'm hopeful at our next committee of the whole meeting that we have a discussion as a body regarding use of technology, getting back into chambers and/or use of technology while we continue to meet virtually. And I did appreciate that there's some progress going on with the administration, and thank you to Mr. Schultz and to the mayor for that. At last, I wanted to share a little bit of informa, some black history. Judge Carl Avani is a historian and shared some, some, a great, some great information I thought would be useful for folks to know. Fifty-three years ago today, public sanitation workers, Mr. Cole and Mr. Walker, were crushed to death in a compactor that they were operating in Memphis, Tennessee. Black sanitation workers had complained to the city for years about unsafe working conditions, unfair wages, racial discrimination, and unfair labor practices, aimed at keeping them from unionizing. The deaths of Cole and Walker on February first, 1968, were as wholly avoidable as they were gruesome, and the workers had had enough. Ultimately, they, they ended up joining the AFF CME and were supported by the United Rubber Workers Local 186. This strike grew and attracted the largest group of black union members in Memphis, and it attracted the attention and support of civil rights movement, including the NAACP and Reverend Martin Luther King. Dr. King flew to Memphis on March 18th, speaking to thousands of strikers and supporters and drawing the national eye to the cause of workers' rights and racial equity. It culminated in a massive protest later in March, which was led by a grassroots local civil rights group, local union leaders, local ministers, the NAACP and Dr. King. When the protest was disrupted and ended prematurely by Memphis law enforcement, it was rescheduled for April 5th, which is why Dr. King was standing on the balcony of the Lorraine Motel in Memphis on April 4th, 1968. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leesberg?
Um, in honor of Groundhog Day tomorrow, everybody don't drive angry.
Thank you. Mr. Schnitzer?
Nothing to add this evening, thank you.
Mr. McGregor? May I tell you I'm mute?
I said nothing tonight, thank you. Sorry.
All right. I have one small thing. Oh, nothing that was particularly needed at this time. Nothing else to add for the saving other than folks, just if you're out and about, be safe out on the streets. I, I went to the mailbox this morning. That's about as far as I've gone. And with that, we'll move to public comment. And Mr. McClurg, I think I have you on mute. If you want to go off mute. April, that is star six, is that mute or unmute?
Correct.
Mr. McClurg, if you would hit star six on your phone, that should unmute you. Tim? We'll give him just a minute. Tim, if you can hit star six, that should unmute the phone. April, as the organizer or manager of the meeting, do you have the ability to unmute?
I do not. He's coming back in.
Yep.
Hello?
Mr. McClurg?
Yay.
How are you this evening?
I'm good. How are you?
Not too bad. We have, we had moved the public comment later to the end so that you give you an opportunity to speak. If you would give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Okay, my name is Tim McClurg. I live at nine three five Leaf Lock Court. I'm across from middle school south, and that is what my comments pertain to. So I'd like to discuss a little bit more about controlling speed on Helmbride. Since we are putting an elementary school, and I understand that we're gonna be putting a stop sign possibly in at Shillingwood, I wondered if we're waiting until the school actually opens before we do that? And if we're going to improve the crosswalks to have the flashing lights so that you can push a button and have flashing lights before you cross, since this will be an elementary school here also. The last thing I wanted to discuss is the fact that it doesn't seem like we want to put in speed bumps. There are speed bumps that are designed that if you go 25 miles an hour, your car can go over them without banging it up. It'll just nicely smoothly go over it and then down. And I wonder why we're so opposed to the speed bumps. I've been through some neighborhoods in Gehanna, and they do have speed bumps in there. I can get to the street addresses if you want. But I'm just wondering why we don't do that. And I'd like that to be researched a little bit. I know that Kroger's just putting speed bumps, and I know they're a private industry to control speed in their parking lot. But that's what I'd like to be able to do along Helmbride. A lot of people seem to use that instead of Taylor Station as a cut-through road to get over to Taylor. And I'm just wondering what, what, what we can do about that. Some of the speed bumps I've seen advertised, they actually put them in the crosswalk. So the crosswalk is elevated. And so that if you go over that speed bump, you're going over an elevated part of the pavement. That's really all I wanted to talk about. Thank you for your time. Thank you for doing a good job this winter with the snow. I was surprised our court got clouded and we're on a court. So I was pretty happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Mayor, could you have Grant or John follow up and check into our traffic controls, especially in neighborhoods, and get back with Mr. McClurg?
Yes, I know that, absolutely, I will. I know that Director Crawford and I've had conversations around speed bumps on Helmbride probably about this time last year. So I can, we'll definitely ask one of them to reach out to Mr. McClurg directly, not a problem.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. I know that we've, I've had some discussions with it, and they said Gehanna really doesn't employ speed bumps to control speed. And so I'm trying to figure out what other way you would control speed because putting signs out that flash, don't, don't do it. A lot of people ignore the 20 mile an hour speed limit when the sign for the school is flashing. And so that's what I was looking at. But if, if we get those elevated ones where you can go 25 miles an hour over them without, like I said, destroying your car, I think that would keep people down below 25. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, would ask for a motion to go into executive session under five dot four zero A of council procedure to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employer official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual unless the public employee, official licensee, or regulated individual request public hearing.
I'll move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated and included in the agenda.
Second.
Ms. Bowers moved, Mr. Leesberg seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call?
Bowers?
Powers.
Yes. Yes.
Leesberg. Leesberg.
Yes. Yes.
Lyric. Lyric.
Yes. Yes.
McGregor. McGregor.
Yes. Yes.
Renner. Renner.
Yes. Yes.
Schnitzer. Schnitzer.
Yes. Yes.
Angelu. Angelu.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion carries. Motion carries. I believe this is just council. I don't expect any action to come from the executive session. I believe this is just council. I don't expect any action to come from the executive session. If you wish to remain on this call, you can for adjournment. If you wish to remain on this call, you can for adjournment. Otherwise, have a good evening, and if council would move to the executive session meeting. Otherwise, have a good evening, and if council would move to the executive session meeting.
So we leave. So we leave.
You can stay in this one, and it will just stay up. You can stay in this one, and it will just stay up. And just into the calendar on Teams, you can go to the next call And just into the calendar on Teams, you can go to the next call and just come right back to it, or you can hang up and call back. and just come right back to it, or you can hang up and call back.
Hey Lori.
Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one. Alright. Yep, sorry, I was in the process of loading teams and I saw your thing pop up, so.
Okay, alright, can you hop on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave this one.
All right. Uh, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, I don't see Karen. She's coming. Well, we have nothing further to come before council. To adjourn by unanimous consent. April, thank you.
Yep. Oh, there she is.
We're adjourned Karen.